Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
This meeting to order Rockingham School Board at 5:31 on November 2nd, 2020.
Oh my goodness.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You need to warn me before you do that, sir.
Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda? Hang on, before we get going, somebody's not muted in there, they're coming through. There we go, that's better. Thank you whoever it was. Any adjustments to the agenda? I may have one. We have down at 10A appoint a policy committee member. I dug out the old March 2020 agenda in minutes and it looks like we already have that. So Jason Benson is the policy committee member with Priscilla being the alternate. If as long as that is okay to stand, we can scratch that. Jason and Priscilla. Good. Jason, I can't see you.
Yeah, I gave you a checkmark there in participants, but yeah, that's good.
Excellent, thank you. And then of course, the executive session in 9A will go after item 12, just prior to adjournment. So. Any other adjustments? Okay, review and approve public minutes for October 19th. Everybody had a chance to review those? Entertain a motion or discussion or?
So move, George, to accept the minutes.
Any discussion? Roll call, Megan?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason Terry? Pretty sure that was a yes. Jason Benson?
Yes.
Very good. Moving on. Communication and public comments. Anybody have, from the public, have any comments? Rebecca Stockwell, I see your hand. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Am I unmuted? Yes, okay. I have watched the past couple of board meetings, not in lifetime, but I've reviewed them. In the past couple of meetings, there's been a mention of using a church as an extension of the buildings. And I just want to urge you to maybe reconsider that. I think that there's a lot of, it doesn't even matter if there's a lot, if there's one family that is uncomfortable with that, that don't practice Christianity, that don't, that are uncomfortable in a church for a whole number of reasons. It's, I really feel strongly that it should not be on the table. And then the other thing is, I just want to urge you to remember that all of the people who have traveled, you know, I've seen a lot of disappointment about people who have teachers, staff who have traveled and have been, had to quarantine after that, is that they are, they are people and missing important things like weddings or funerals is going to cause a lot of distress in their lives. We all, all of us currently have a lot of distress in our lives and are having to juggle things. And a message coming from the board that you need to stand out of your life is really hard on the staff.
Thank you for your words Rebecca. Anybody else, any comments, public comment? Chris, go ahead. You're muted.
What I wanted to do is just read the memo that went out on the other day in regards to the positive COVID case we had in Westminster School. So if you'd just allow me to read that again, just for those of you who aren't on the emailing list and who don't visit the website. Dear Wyndham Northeast families, as you know, per our communication that was sent out on October 29th, we have our first positive case of COVID-19 at the Westminster Center School. On the morning of October 30th, the Westminster Center School Task Force, along with the principal, the superintendents, and the school nurses, met with the Vermont Department of Health to discuss the case and next steps for the school. Westminster Central School and WNESU will continue to work with the Department of Health and assist us with this case. During our meeting with the Vermont Department of Health, we have analyzed the current situation at the school of positive COVID-19 case and that its impact on our school community, students and staff. Initially, the Westminster School had planned and were so very excited to welcome all the students back on Monday, November 2nd, 2020. But at this time, we do not feel it is appropriate. While this case is not a result of in-school exposure, it does affect the community in a multifaceted way. Because of this, Westminster School will move forward. With a week of remote learning for the week of 11-2 through 11-6, students will engage in online learning opportunities that they had done last spring and during remote learning days this year. We plan on welcoming all the students in grades pre-K through 5th grade back in the building on Monday, November 9th. Please remember that school meals will continue to be available for Saxon's River Elementary School at, I'm sorry, will still be available at Saxon's River Elementary School, Bellas Falls Middle School, and Bellas Falls Union High School, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 1 to 2, free of charge. Thank you for your patience as we work together to mitigate the situation. We look forward to having the Westminster Center School students back in the building once again on Monday, November 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Taking that as a public comment. So I'm going to give one more chance for anybody from the public if they want to have anything to say. Please speak up now. Okay, moving on. Policies, if any. Have any policies? I don't think we do at this point.
No, we do not. We're currently, the policy committee didn't. We're not ready to bring any policies forth to the individual boards.
You glitched out for a second. Did you say the policy committee did meet?
Policy committee did meet and discussed some policies, but they're not ready to bring any policies to individual boards as of today.
Okay, so Jason Benson would want to get on any of those lists with information? Any of those emails with information that he needs to be up to speed on? Okay, moving on, reports, principals. Who wants first?
George, before you move on, could you also make sure that my name is on there so that I can attend as an alternate?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep. Chris, you caught that? Chris, did you catch that last comment?
Yes, I did.
Yep, very good. Thank you.
No, I don't know.
Reports, principals. Who's eager to go first? Mrs. Kennedy, I see your hand.
I can start.
Kind of waving. Go ahead.
Royal wave. So hi, good evening, everybody. Central Elementary School was able to bring back 1st and 2nd grade last week for four days of instruction. I apologize, my dog is whining over here. And so that's gone very well. And so we were hoping to bring back 3rd and 4th grade. Well, we will be bringing them back, but the teacher that we were hoping to have with them has decided to drop out of the candidacy and is not joining us. So unfortunately, we will keep with our promise happening on the 9th, sorry. But we will not be able to do it with a teacher. We will have a sub in place until we can find a permanent teacher. So we will honor our commitment to bring the families back in next Monday for four days, but we will not be able to do it with a full teacher except for the sub right now. Okay, moving on, sorry. He's been very noisy today. Let's see, we also continuing, excuse me, with our map testing. We have just a few makeups and we're almost done with that. And families will begin report, I'm so sorry, a report for, with their report card conferences coming up. So November 23rd will be parent-teacher conferences. And then the students will be getting their map reports on the Friday, the 20th, and then also the report cards prior to the actual conference. So they'll be having those ready to go. And then grades actually will be closing next week, believe it or not, for the first trimester. So we're moving along very quickly for that. And so families will be getting the report cards, like I said, very soon. Teachers this week are meeting in data teams to review all of their data for the Baptist Penel classroom and then also the map data and just kind of getting a chance to meet with their colleagues at their grade levels and discuss, you know, next steps for their grades according to the whole SU. So basically, that's where we're up to right now. Any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Megan.
So hi Carrie, I'm really, just because I'm nosy, I want to know what do parent-teacher conferences look like in a COVID era? What does that entail?
So basically about 15 or 20 minutes per family and they will be a Zoom, you know, or a Google Meet call. And so it's a little bit different and it's definitely something that, you know, families will be sadly getting used to. But just to get a chance to check in, we don't want to lose the opportunity to connect with the families. But just kind of give them a chance to ask questions, concerns, things like that. It's certainly not anything that we'd like to see, but it is, I guess, right now, so.
Perfect, thank you. I was just nosy.
No problem.
Any other questions, comments? I'll save mine for last. Jason Terry, go ahead.
Carrie, what's your dog's name?
I have two, Doc Hollywood and Toby Ziegler.
Cool. Thank you for all you're doing at the Central School. I hear nothing but great things of everything that you're accomplishing there and not as a parent. I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, so I've got a question. How, so it was brought to some of our attention that there's maybe some teachers that are unsure of the idea of starting next week. Can you speak to the 3rd and 4th grade spacing issues, staffing issues? I know you said that the 3rd grade teacher dropped out, of course.
Right.
And is it something that you're comfortable with moving forward on? I guess I'll leave it.
So, you know, it's not, it's not ideal, unfortunately. So 4th grade, I'll speak to that first, has 21 students. And so we had to really readjust the room. So Friday during the professional development time, the teachers were able to spend some time readjusting the room for the three feet guidance for Phase 3. And with that, there are tight corners, I will be very honest. We've explored the option of the library. The teacher is still on the fence because then everything that she needs, if we use the library as a resource space, is all across the way on the other side of the building. And, you know, and she's been toying with, you know, is that a better option? Yes, it gives the kids maybe a few more feet, not many. It's actually an awkward composition of the library too, so it doesn't give a lot more teachable space. But, you know, but then everything, the tools that she has or would need would be separated too. So that's something that she's weighing right now. And with the classroom setup and the makeup that they have right now, it's very tight corners because also with some of the 4th graders, we do have some one-to-one paraprofessionals. And so they are also kind of unfortunately not really ideally situated as well, making sure that they're doing their one-to-one work with students. Some are in the classroom, some are out of the classroom, depending upon the needs of the students. But it is very tight quarters and that is something that's a concern for everybody, especially during mealtime because they are unmasked and they're very close to each other. So they still meet the physical guidelines of three feet, but the teacher at the front of the room is very close to where the students are. And so that is of concern. And unfortunately, right now, with, by bringing the students back on next Monday without the remote option, there's not a lot of opportunities, so except the library or, and then the gym can't be used acoustically. It's an issue for some students that we have with hearing impairments. And so we don't have a lot of options. So it's the library or the 4th grade classroom. And so 3rd grade, obviously that's a tight one, you know, and we're using the, will be a sub in the classroom. And so the space will be available, which will break up the opportunity for the students. So there'll be about 16 and 16 in each 3rd grade room. But it's not having a teacher, you know, certified teachers is something that we're challenged with. We've reposted the position. We're still working with the universities. We're hoping for a December graduation student who might be available. But as of right now, they're still posting it in the universities and trying to find somebody that might be able to fill this position. That's kind of where we're at. It's very difficult, I think, for everybody, you know. I understand the families want everybody back in, but at the same time, it is tight quarters and trying to get everybody back in too changes the dynamics of the building too.
Any other comments for Ms. Kennedy, questions? Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Appreciate all your hard work.
Sure, thank you.
Who's up next? Ms. Bukowski, I see. Oh, Ms. Hazard got her camera on first. Go ahead, Ms. Hazard.
Okay, hello everyone, good evening. So thanks for going well at our school. In the spirit of Halloween and because we weren't able to hold our traditional Halloween parade, on Thursday last week, we invited students and staff to come in, come to school in costume. And it was great to see everyone having fun, both adults and children. And thank you to our PTO for providing a goodie bag for each student. They were quarantined before we handed them out, so thank you to our PTO for that. And our nurse, Nurse Jen Vaughn, is putting together a video to share with families. So that should be posted soon to our website and Facebook page. So look for that. Our school newsletter continues to shine as teachers add bi-weekly updates about learning in their classroom. And I am so impressed with the learning that is taking place. And you all know it, but I'm going to say it again, and I've said it before, our teachers are outstanding. Today, we welcome back, we welcome back all of our 3rd and 4th graders for in-person learning. Our 3rd grade, as you know, has 19 students. And so Plexiglas barriers were built as an added safety precaution. We do have at least the three feet, but felt that the barriers were needed, especially when they took their masks off for eating. The day did go smoothly and our task force will meet on Wednesday, as we always do, to reflect on steps that we've taken. We also welcome back two additional VTVLC students today. Dental cleanings are taking place this week, which was rescheduled from last week. The hygienist was not able to be with us last week. And then a few thank yous. Two weeks ago, I shared that a local quilter had donated two handmade quilts. And I did not pronounce her name correctly, so I want to take another try at it. The proper pronunciation of her name is Isabel Croto. So thank you to Isabel. Also, a big thank you to Jim Ruggiero. He has once again made it possible for every Saxon's River Elementary student to have a free T-shirt. And our hands-themed design is awesome this year. So thank you to Jim for a very generous donation. Thank you also to the Bellas Falls Downtown Development Alliance, who provided each student with $5 in BF bucks as a coupon, which was awesome. And as well, a big thank you to the Elks, who once again will provide winter outerwear for identified students in need. So I am again so thankful for the outpouring of community support. That's all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Hazard? Comments? Priscilla, go ahead.
Jason had his up first.
Jason, go ahead.
Ms. Hazard, I just wanted to say I really like your newsletter that you send out. It's colorful and it's, you know, very well put together and very informative. So thank you for, you and your staff for doing that. Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That was, that was basically going to be my comment was their newsletter. It is awesome and really appreciate always seeing it.
Thanks. Thank you to my teachers and to Josh and everyone that makes that possible. It's not all me. So thanks for my staff, to my staff for making it happen as well.
Anything else?
I'm glad it went smoothly today too.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. How smoothly did it go? And, you know, any hiccups, any, anything you might see coming in the future that may be problematic?
Much like Carrie shared, it's tight in 3rd grade. So even though, you know, we have at least three feet and had that well planned out, well thought about, had the additional Plexiglas barriers built, once you put bodies in there, it's a completely different feel, which is what we experienced today. So it was only day one. I'm going to make some adjustments for day two, much like, you know, we do as, as things happen. And then on Wednesday, when we meet as a task force, just kind of do a complete debrief and see if there are some things that we can tweak to make it a little bit more comfortable. Not in the sense that we're not meeting the three feet guideline because we definitely are, but it just feels tight. And I know Carrie expressed the same, the same feeling.
Thank you. Last chance, anything else for Mrs. Hazard? All right, thank you ma'am. Moving on to Ms. Bukowski. It's all yours.
Good evening. We welcomed back our 5th graders full-time today. And just has been said, it looks very different when you get them all in, in terms of bodies. And 5th grade bodies are a little bit bigger than 3rd and 4th grade bodies. Overall, it went well. There was a little, some, we still, I was struggling with the social distancing in the hallways, et cetera. Now we've added more bodies to the second floor hallway, so that's something we'll continue to work on. May need to do a couple of adjustments in UA classes just because of, again, trying to maintain that three feet and, you know, that barrier, et cetera. And, you know, that three feet is student to student, but it stays at six feet from student to teacher. And so that is something, you know, we're continuing to look at. We're discussing, and we have a timeline for bringing back our 6th graders. We're looking at November 30th, which is the first day of the second trimester. They have three feet and we're working with the 6th grade teachers. We're experimenting with some different types of furniture, et cetera. Because again, 6th grade bodies are bigger than 3rd and 4th grade bodies. We'll get rearranging classrooms, working on reshuffling the pods. And, you know, we're monitoring that 5th grade transition so that we can apply any of the lessons that we learned from the 5th grade transition into that 6th grade transition as well. Right now, for 7th and 8th grade, we are on hold. We have four students on a waiting list wanting to come back from VTVLC at this point. And we have welcomed back 12 VTVLC students total. Map testing, we finished our map testing and I have some data for you on that. And we spent part of the in-service on Friday diving into map data. I'm really happy to report that 61% of our students scored at or above grade level in reading. Only 37% scored at or above grade level in math. However, when we compare this to the winter 2020 scores, there's an improvement. Reading was 54% there, math was 35%. So our students have improved and they're showing proficiency. But I do want to stress that map is more of a growth measurement. So looking at the growth numbers, 67% of our students demonstrated growth in reading. And that means that their scores from January, and we tested in October, 67% of our students showed improvement in reading and 53% in math. So we're really happy with that, really proud. I'm very proud of the work that my staff has done, all of my teachers. They've been really, really working with these kids to help us definitely offset any type of COVID slide. And so I would just like to stress that our map results do indicate that our students have not experienced the degree of COVID slide that was anticipated in the research that we talked about. And really, the credit goes to our teachers and our paras and all of our staff for that. Map reports will be going home in the first trimester report cards. And I'm sure will be discussed also at parent-teacher conferences. We are, the in-service days that we recently have, on Thursday afternoon, EAP, our Employee Assistance Program, did a presentation for our staff, a session on managing stress and their anxieties during this time. Because it's really important that we take care of ourselves and we take care of our teachers and staff. Friday, we spent more time hearing about restorative practices from Claire Kunsler, who's guiding us in working out the differences between restorative practices and restorative justice. And then we did a data dive into the map scores, discussing that student growth and proficiency. And we used a new feature that map testing has called the Recovery and Growth Setting Chart, which provides us an analysis of scores and provides a growth goal, a stretch goal, and a COVID recovery goal for each student. These sections were interactive, they were really productive, and were well received. And if you haven't seen the October 20th, Rattleboro Reformer, please take a look. There's an article in there about how our 8th grade had a scavenger hunt around town as part of a team building and community building activity. And this was an adaptation to a trip they normally would have taken, but unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions, have been unable to take. Other than that, I, again, I would agree with everything that Ms. Hazard said about the job that our teachers are doing. And we also distributed our BF bucks in the mid-trimester reports. Questions?
Any questions or comments for Ms. Bukowski? Priscilla, go ahead.
Karen, were your scores that you were just giving with those, these students last year in 7th grade to this year in 8th grade? Or were they last year's 8th grade to this year's 8th grade?
I didn't give grade level scores. What I gave were overall scores. So it was students, our students that we had in the winter and our students that we had in the fall.
So it's the same students you're comparing, not class to class?
Correct, correct, because I had the, the results, the student results from when they were in 4th grade for this year's 5th grade as well. So yes, we compared student to student, not class to class.
Okay, has there been any progress made on looking for placements for being able to bring the 7th to 8th grade back? I can ask that later too in the, in the progress thing. But I did listen to the public comment on that, that was caution about churches. Granted, the church, if you used a church room, it would not be a part of the church service-type areas. Would be a, like a recreation-type room. And I know they do have one at the United Church, I know they have one at the Baptist Church there. And there's a big room, at least there used to be at the Episcopal Church that's right there, close to the high school. But there also should be some buildings. I know in looking for other buildings, we looked at one last year for superintendent's building possibly. Maybe that one's available. I don't know. There should be some other buildings and right close in town that we could use because I think it is important that we be looking for the 7th, 8th grade. Hopefully, maybe the start on the next trimester, November 30th would be a good goal. Maybe if we could have something by the next meeting so that we know, you know, what's available and what we could decide on, that would be really good.
That process right now is on hold. And I don't know if you would like to say more.
You're muted, Chris.
I know Ms. Bukowski has been working on putting together a task force. But with the rising cases and even want, you know, having a case right here in the SU, right now, we're, we're backing off a little bit. We're taking it slower. Not knowing, um, where this is going to go. So although she has her task force and their buildings out there, um, right now, the seventh and eighth grade will still be working towards it, but it's, it's not on the front burner in regards to trying to get them back as quick as possible until things settle in a little more. We're still looking at it. We're not saying we're not. We're just saying right now it's, there are a lot of concerns out there from the public and everyone. Especially now that we have a case in our own SU.
Yes, however, we've had six months of these students not having in person, real in-person instruction. So we really do need to be looking at other buildings and possibly being able to split them up to maintain that six feet and be able to provide for these children.
Yeah, we want to find-
I would urge you to just keep looking and keep really working hard on it.
We're gonna, we're gonna continue to look and stuff, but, um, Mrs. Stockwell wasn't the only, um, community member who's expressed concern about, um, putting students in a, um, religious setting. So we, we're trying to take that into consideration as well.
Hang on, hang on, Priscilla. If, if I may, I just want to speak to that for a quick second. It would be, it would be, so I don't want to just, you know, everybody's feelings are valid. Believe me, that's, that's a true statement. These, these community rooms, these, these rooms that are, I know I've seen them. I know what they look like. They're almost separate from the church. So I would just want to have, ask people to have an open mind about that part of it. And if that was going to be an avenue, I don't know how things are going to progress. If it was going to, then I would assume that the, the, the condition would be that it would be strictly for that, that, that room, that area, whatever is being used by the school would be strictly, um, used by the school and there wouldn't be any exposure to anything outside of that. That's, that's my vision of something like that happening. Um, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I mean, I think look, you know, like I said, we're going to continue to, to look at that. But with the, also we're, we're trying to look at how the state is interpreting it as well. And one of the things that we, we see in the new updated guidance is that if you look at the, the section on field trips, you know, they're saying they don't want our kids out in any, you know, public settings in regards to, um, exposing kids to climates that we don't have control over the sanitization and stuff. So we'd need to find a building that, like you said, George, we have sole access to. So we don't have to worry about that part of the public. But, um, like I said, we're a step, we're, we're going to continue to work towards, you know, whatever we can to get the seventh and eighth graders back. It's just, um, I don't think it's gonna, it's not as easy as, um, we want it to be in regards to the most recent cases and, you know, sifting through all the different guidelines of the do's and don'ts. We're just, we're just trying to do, um, what's best and safest for the kids. Like we've always said from step one, but I, we know as administration, we know where the board comes from and we want to continue to work forward to getting all kids back. I mean, I think no one's going to disagree with that. It's just doing it, um, safely and under the right circumstances.
Any other, uh, comments, questions for Ms. Bukowski? Uh, I'll finish up. It was great to hear progress.
George?
From the, from, hang on.
George.
Hang on. It was great to hear progress from, uh, for the students. Um, I would encourage you guys not to, and I know I probably don't have to say it, keep, keep, keep barreling forward and, and trying to find something. If I can help with that, I, I want to. I wasn't able to help in the way that I thought I was able to help with the last, um, last, last round, but, um, please let's, there, there's gotta be something out there that we can utilize. Uh, if they did this well, uh, remotely and in part-time hybrid, then how well would they do in person, right? So, um, just keep plugging away, guys. You, you, you're doing good things and keep plugging away. Thanks. Go ahead, Priscilla.
Uh, this is basically for Carrie because I was just thinking that, um, in the beginning of December uh, or mid-December, I, they start collecting stuff at the beginning of December, but by mid-December, they have done a shopping thing for the kids so that they could shop in the, um, cafeteria, in the big old purpose room at Central School, um, and be able to buy, um, Christmas presents for their families. And I was wondering, I know with the restrictions and the spacing and that, it's, it will be difficult. But whether, you know, there can be at least some kind of, um, program to help with that. Because that way we're providing for the children's presents for either Christmas or Hanukkah or any of their other type gifts that they do at that time of year.
So we are definitely looking into that. Uh, we just need to be cautious of quarantining anything that comes in as a donation. Uh, but we're working as our counseling team as meets every week and planning out what kind of donations we have. We do have some local businesses. We appreciate that really, Chroma and several others that give to us, um, to help for our students. And so we're trying to coordinate all these efforts so that we can get them all in one place so that, to do the shopping and then to do some other donations that we give out. So absolutely.
Ms. Hazard, that applies to you too, right? The, uh, white elephant sale, similar, similar arrangement?
Um, yes, very much so. And, um, we, at the last PTO meeting, we did talk about that. So we were, we are in the initial, um, conversation phase of thinking and, um, hopefully planning for that.
Very good. Are we all set with principals? Good reports. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much. Um, business office, Flora, you're up.
Hi, good night. Um, so currently I'm working, um, with all the principals already on budget. So hopefully we'll have, um, budget ready by the first week of December. So we could present to you guys. Um, today I met, um, with Helen and Carrie. Most likely we've been finding a lot of our extra expenses in the budget. I don't know if you guys been, um, reviewing the budget versus actual report. Everything is COVID related. Uh, I'm not sure if you, um, received the reports or not. I haven't got like feedbacks from any of you about the report, if it's something that has been working, if you guys have any questions. Um, I do know it goes out there. I have other board members that have contacted me regarding concerns about the report or any questions they have with, um, numbers they see. We do have warrants as well available for you guys still. Um, it was agreed that, uh, we were gonna keep warrants only for 48 hours. I'm not sure if you guys were all aware about it.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a, a fine thing for this board as well. Flora, um, same thing. If we don't get there in a couple of days, move on. And, and as long as everybody in this board is in agreement with that, see thumbs up, head bob. Yeah, okay. So yeah, let's, let's go with the same thing that, uh, the SU went with. Forty-eight hours, move on.
Like if you guys have any questions, you know, you can always ask for a certain document. We'll always get that for you, if anything. I've been trying to follow up with, um, Rockingham Town. Uh, it's been really, uh, difficult. I emailed, um, Brenda Doherty, as well as, um, Darlene Town Clerk. Uh, Rockingham is the only town that haven't given us that even, um, a portion of their, um, tax payments. And is challenging for us because right now we haven't been able to do, um, a payment that is due for, um, the loans that were, um, incurred for some, um, remodels that were done, I guess, 2007, another 2008 and two different ones from 2012. I can't make any payments of the loan if I don't get any of the taxes from the town. This was collected after the first week of August, I think it was. I invoiced them on the first week of October. It's been over a month. And I follow up again with them on Thursday with some emails. I even, um, mentioned on my last email that, you know, if they had a check available for me, I will go personally and pick it up. Right now I did have to email today the bank and let them know that as soon as I get any payments from the town of Rockingham, um, I will make our payment for the loan. Other than that, I just can't make any payments.
Anything we can do to help support that? Is there anybody that we should contact? I should contact, uh, on behalf of the board? Um, how, how can we be helped to you?
Like I said, I, I'm just informing, you know, cause I don't want it to come up that the business of, I haven't been paying the loan for any reasons. I just can't do it if I don't get tax payments, um, from the town. I, like I said, um, Thursday, I follow up with Brenda Doherty, which is accounts payable. I sent that email to the town clerk and I swallow another email to the, um, financial manager as well. So I've been contacting three different people. I don't know where else to go there. And like I said, I, I invoice them in the beginning of October.
Can you, uh, do me a favor and forward me, uh, those folks that you're contacting in those positions? And, um, I'd be happy to put something out there as well with a little bit of push. I don't know if it'll help, but I'd be happy to, to do so.
Like I said, I, I put in my message and, and I'm gonna forward it to you that I am more than happy to go and pick up that check. Once I get that check, I, I have like remote deposit. I could deposit immediately and go to our account and we can make our payment. Right now they're gonna give me this first week of grace, you know, cause there's nothing else I could do. I, I, I can't, you know, leave our account at zero just to pay a loan.
Okay. Yeah, forward me those and, uh, I'll, I'll, we'll give them a, give them a heavy nu- nudge. Uh, go ahead, Priscilla.
Um, do you think that, that some of that has to do with the fact that, um, Rockingham taxes are paid quarterly? And so, um, taxes are due November 10th?
Have you gotten responses from them?
So, um, the email that I got on Thursday from Brenda was, um, just asking if we could just split it quarterly, which I did for her as well. So I'm just waiting on that last email. But yes, the taxes are, are, are split quarterly. Some of the towns have paid me all of it, even though they do get payments quarterly. But even if it is that way, we should have received our first payment by October already. And it is, the business office just emails them an invoice and splits it for them. But by law, they know when they need to submit their payments. You know, they get a state document that lets them know how much they owe each of the schools. So, uh, this is just me giving an extra step, splitting it for them, you know, putting a due date for them. So like right now, their first payment was due by October. Then they'll have another payment due in February and then the next payment will be due by May. So I did split it for them as well. It doesn't need to be split because they, like I said, other towns pay me 100% just to be done with us.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Flora? Jason Terry, go ahead.
Flora, you mentioned that, um, the budget process for December 1st. Um, it's my first time going around on this. Can you fill me in on what that is going to entail?
So, um, right now I'm meeting with, um, principals. So we could just review, um, the year-to-date expenses and just to see how it's gonna look for the next year. Um, right now, like the budget that they have in place, we don't have COVID expenses. So we are trying to just be one step ahead and, you know, take into consideration that right now we do get government grants for COVID. But that might not happen forever. So right now we need to be prepared for next year, you know, taking a hit wise for go, for COVID expenses that may not be covered by the, by any grants.
So fo- follow up on that. So if there is COVID expenses next year, that needs to be built into the budget, correct?
Yes.
And if there is no COVID expenses, then that needs to not be built into the budget, correct?
Well, right now we don't know if it's not gonna be, but we should be prepared for it. Like right now, uh, we have different expenses. Even if it wouldn't be 100% COVID related, you know, we still have, uh, PPE equipment. We have, um, some like facility upgrades that we have done. So I don't think that at least facility, um, repairs will go away. Like right now, thinking about like getting an extra space, that is a, a COVID-related expense that we haven't taken into consideration.
Right. So if there is COVID-related expenses and the town gives you X amount of dollars each time, where's that money gonna come from?
So right now the idea and what we've been doing is trying to adjust, um, different extra expenses that, um, the school has, like maybe, um, cutting up and, and supplies. Um, right now to, um, minimize the impact of the expenses, I've been trying to have like a stronger grip on whatever is being spent. Review and what we are approving. That's the best we could do right now.
Yeah, but you, you, you can't cut back a million pencils. You're gonna have to look for big money somewhere, I'm assuming, right?
Uh, yep.
Yeah. I mean, Jason, I think in the, in the whole process, you're right. It's like, we're trying to get back as much of the COVID expenses that the local budgets had to pick up to the SO monies and stuff like that. So will we get all of it back? Pro, you know, I, probably not. Um, so that's gonna take some of the relief, but it's one of those things that in, in the overall process, what happens is that the principals will meet with the business manager or myself and we'll go through and we'll take a look at the budget. And then they'll present that budget to the board and the board can go in and say, look, either we accept the budget or you know what? We'd like to see, you know, 2%, 1% or a dollar amount shaved off the budget, off the bottom line. And then what happens is the principals will go back and look, okay, if we want, say the board wants to shave, you know, 250,000 to $500,000 off the budget. The principals would then go in and look to see where they could shave that off.
So can I, can I ask you a question on that? Cause again, this is my first time going through this, but I'm assuming it goes back and forth a couple of times?
Yeah, it does.
So is it possible to have a, you know, maybe a senior board member who's been around a long time to help with the initial process? So you don't have to go back and forth quite a bit? I'm not, I'm not sure. Just bring it here.
I think, you know, it's, it's tough. I mean, we want it, you know, because technically the board has final approval on the budget that goes to the taxpayers. So it does go back, well, like when you guys get it in December, that'll be your first look at it. And I mean, you, you have a, you know, you can bring, you know, another board member on the board who's done it for a while to, from another board or something to assist you in the process. But it's pretty much, it's just a going back and forth between the board and the administration. And that's when the board gives directives to the administration, either add or cut from the bottom line or a percentage this much. Boards, you know, don't get into cutting from line items. We leave that up to the administration because it's a, you know, how, because they're the ones who know how it affects the daily operations of schools. But it is a back and forth thing and because the board has to be comfortable with the budget that they're gonna present to their constituents.
Man, there's some pretty, pretty tough times we got ahead of us. So when it, when is this due? Is it like March or February when the town, town votes, right? Usually?
Yeah.
So we don't, we got a short window to get this accomplished and it's Christmas season and a bunch of holiday season is pretty busy at the Terry House. So I can imagine it's pretty busy everywhere else.
Yeah, you know, the budgets, you know, typically are started around end of October, beginning of November. And so, um, you know, that's when the administration and the business office, they do all their work together. And then in December, you guys will get the first look at it, break it all down, give it back to the administration. And then the turnover isn't month to month. During these times, what happens is the board will call budget meetings and they'll be outside of the norm of the regular board meeting. So once, once you guys get a first look at the first budget, then it kind of moves along a little faster because you got, you, and then we try to turn it around within, you know, once a week or maybe sometimes depending on how close we are to the deadline. There might be multiple budget meetings, um, in one week just because, um, there's so much to look at, but it's, it's definitely going back. And there's, there's really no way to avoid that because like I said, ultimately the board has to be comfortable with what they're presenting to their constituents and support it. A long process and that's why we start so early.
So let me, can I ask you a question, Mr. Pratt? You've been around a lo- a lo- long time and you know a lot of people, uh, above you. What's the consensus with, uh, how the budgets are probably gonna look next year?
You mean around the state?
Yeah, yeah, stuff like that. What's your, what's your gut?
I, I think, I think in general, for the most part, um, you know, we're not gonna be adding to budgets. I think we're all in the same situation. Is that they're either gonna be level funded or, um, percentage cuts.
That's, that's gonna be tough for a lot of people, especially when in a small town, we have, uh, you know, a lot of the teachers that go, that teach. That's, that's gonna be tough for a lot of people, especially when in a small town, we have, you know, a lot of the teachers that go, that teach at all the schools, live in this town. So it's a, it's a bad, bad business model.
Right. We, you know, we knew, you know, based on this, even last year without the COVID situation, we knew how, you know, the state of Vermont, you know, it's getting more and more difficult for budgets because we continue to have that statewide drop in enrollment and that pushes up, you know, the dollar amounts. So it, no, it's, it's gonna be another year. It's not gonna be easy, but.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were having problems prior to COVID. And then once COVID started, it seemed as if, you know, the powers to be in Montclair just kind of kicked the can down the road a little bit to pretend that we weren't having problems. And now it's like, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a perfect storm of, you know, I feel bad for everybody involved that has to do all this stuff and I feel bad for the taxpayers and, but it is what it is and we'll do what we gotta do, I guess.
Any other questions, comments? Business office, thank you. Chris, that was enlightening for me too, because I missed a lot of the budget meetings last year because I was coaching youth basketball. But that was, that was very helpful. So thanks. WNESU board?
George?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before you go on, the, I wanna, the budget has to be finished by mid-January because it has to be printed and be able to be put out because it's voted on right after that. So it's, it's got a mid-January deadline.
You would know better than I, so I'll take your word for it. Okay, so moving on, WNESU board, I actually, I know David Clark is here, but you'll be proud of me. I have the agenda up in front of me this time. Just overview on reopening dates by school. There were some enrollment data thrown out there. There were some additions from VTLC, which we know. One of the bigger discussions was bus repairs versus bus leasing or other options. I think it was put out there to put that into the transportation committee to bring something to the board. So that transportation committee on this board is Jason Terry and myself. We'll be looking forward to some sort of meeting to discuss that. Food service account, big things going on there. There were some grants, if I recall, right? And, and a lot of good work going on there. That was a very short overview and there was some executive session, but that's the, that's the overview. Any, anything to add, you guys that were there or? Are we good? Seems good. Okay, moving on, unfinished business. The ongoing discussion, moving step two to step three, progress obstacles, next steps. I guess a lot of that's been talked about. I'm gonna just open it up for discussion and Chris, if you've got something you wanna jump in, feel free. Otherwise, I'm gonna open it up for questions, discussions, board members. Priscilla, I see you unmuted. Does that mean you wanna say something?
I do, but I was waiting to see if others had something. Yeah, I was kind of curious on, you know, and moving forward because we talked about COVID cases and we talked about, you know, the possibility of what happens when they come in. The state has been recommending that schools stay open. And so was this suggested for Westminster? And then we just kind of went with more caution. And I've got a follow-up question after you answer that.
I'd like to say something real quick too. And if somebody asked me a question and I want, you know, Chris, please answer after I'm done. But somebody asked me a question about some things recently regarding state and boards and who directs traffic and whatnot. And, you know, I've gone back and looked at a lot of state stuff and there's a lot of contradicting things. There's a lot of stuff left for interpretation. I don't want to, I want my kids back in school. That's known, but I also don't want to make light of the fact, or not make light of that, but also overlook the fact that the state is very conflicting in some of their, some of their documents. That said, Chris, go ahead and feel free to answer Priscilla's question. Thanks.
Yeah, so the most recent decision is, like I said, a lot of it, most of it came out of the meeting that we had between Department of Health and their powers to be, myself, the principal of the school task force. And what the state does is they give, you know, they give their recommendation and if the school wants, you know, we can do more than that recommendation, but we can't do less. So that's, that's.
That's why I was asking, was their recommendation to stay open and we were just being more cautious?
No, their, you know, their recommendation was, they pretty much agreed with our recommendation because of there, we're still waiting to hear with the contact tracing if there, you know, is, you know, is there other family member in that household gonna test positive or not? And that's something we're still waiting for. So based on that, that's why we went to Westminster being closed for the week because we're still waiting on results.
So it was their recommendation that we followed strictly. I'm just trying to find out whether we're being more cautious and, and that's okay to be more cautious. I just was trying to find out whether that's what we're doing.
No, the state won't come right out and tell us, you know, yes, close to the week. You know, all they could say is they agree with our, they agree with the direction we're going. You know, they, they said, you know, you wanna close for at least two days in most cases, but in this case, they said with trying to, you know, when we're still doing the contact tracing and there's multiple members in the family that is still testing, they said, we agree with the, with our recommendation. They weren't gonna say one way or another. They're, they're very careful about telling us what we should and shouldn't do. They leave that decision up to the local boards. But like I said, any school, you know, that this happens, we can do more than their recommendation. We just can't do less. And in this case, there wasn't really a initial recommendation from the board. I think we all came to the conclusion at the same time that closing Westminster down for the week was probably the, the best route to go based on the, the situation for this current model that we're seeing.
So was this, this child was a kindergarten child. So was this classroom the only classroom or was it the bus that the child came on a bus? So that also impacted?
Hang on a second.
Basically, I wanna know the reasoning that came out of that so that I can plan for, you know, what we're going to expect if it happens in our schools is what I was.
So, so just keep in mind that this is a, not the Rockingham. This is a, this would be for comparative purposes only. So, you know, I would just suggest to answer accordingly.
All I can say to that is that it was not, they did not catch it in the school. It happened outside of the school. And so, yeah, it wasn't, wasn't, it wasn't, you know, something that was brought to us. It wasn't something that was contracted in the building or on the bus.
And so hopefully we can even think that maybe no one at school was even in contact. That's, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Jason Terry, go ahead.
Mr. Pratt, I know it's not our district, but do you, do we have something available for the kids to talk to, to deal with the emotional part of, part of this and for the teachers and whoever else needs to, you know, it's, it's very stressful out there with all these things. So I was wondering if we had that available for people.
Yeah, that's all part of the conversation that you have, the meeting with the state. You know, we, we just, we talk more about just suggestions, but we talk about the, you know, all of that stuff. So there are resources for the families, for the kids, especially when they, if they can't access them at the school. So the state, I must say that the, the state got back to us really quickly. And they were fantastic in regards to, it was a call of probably 15 to 20 people and they were very helpful. And, you know, they're, it, I think, put us at ease a little bit knowing that we have the help of the state like that in a situation that came up so quickly. But yes, they, that's part of the conversations that took place, our supports, next steps, where do we go from here?
Thank you.
Yep.
It's nice to hear that the state gave you such good support. Any other discussion topics, comments on this? On this one, I think we kind of get an idea of what's going on, where we're headed.
Mrs. Kennedy, raise your hand. She wanted to speak.
Oh, is that what that means? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to caution parents that obviously we will always take every precaution we can. But unfortunately, just like Westminster's seeing, there may not be a lot of turnaround time between a case being identified and the possibility of having to go remote. So I think families, it would just be prudent right now to sort of plan a Plan B, C, D, you know, should that happen, because it could happen overnight. It's certainly not something we want to have happen, but for families to be cautious that, okay, you need to have a backup plan for childcare or something like that, just in case it does happen, you know, we are doing, like I said, taking precautions, but it could happen in any school at any time. So that was all.
Thank you. Last chance, anybody else? All right, moving on to, that one got moved. Appointments, resignations, we don't have any, right? Set this time? Okay. Directors' comments? We'd like to go first. Directors, where are we at? Where are you? Jason Terry, you're unmuted. Go for it.
I don't really have anything, George. Just thank you to the teachers. You guys are doing a great job and appreciate what you guys are doing with the kids. And, you know, I've always known that about the teachers in this town, a lot of, especially the central school. You know, all my kids went to the central school. So, you know, all those guys are really good teachers. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Who's next? Megan?
I, I wanna double back and, and say thank you and a big congratulations to Karen and the middle school for those amazing numbers in the midst of everything we've, we're all going through, especially the teachers and everything. It made me proud. My, my kids are the central Bellis Falls Middle School, High School tract and it was really good to hear because everything's been so gloom and doom and we're just sure we're failing our kids and it just kind of shows our kids are pretty resilient and our teachers and our staff are doing an amazing job. So thank you to everyone and Laura and Carrie also. You guys are doing amazing and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Priscilla?
Hi. I guess I would just keep encouraging the ongoing process of persistence and creativeness in solving the problem for seventh and eighth grade because if we can do this well with not being in school, we certainly can do a fantastic job if we can get them in school. And I know there has to be a building somewhere out there, even if we have to go to the, you know, increased cost of mobile buildings. I know they're expensive, but our children are worth every penny that we put into them because they are our future. Also a big shout out, I know it's not our board, but they are our, our people to the high school for their two sets of championship games there, so it was field hockey and cross country. What was it?
You were right, my bad.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you, George. Yeah, I just wanna sum it up briefly here for both our community and our staff. It's, all it takes is one case of COVID, obviously, in the schools to completely throw our whole system off and then everybody suffers. So just please in all your travels and everything else, be cautious, be diligent, wear your mask, clean up. And then all else, doing a good job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So Priscilla just struck something in my, my brain when she mentioned the cost of extra mobile classrooms and it's such a huge expense that during budget season, that may be something we wanna talk about. Asking, asking the town, whatever, we can, we can talk about that if we wanna continue down that road. Other than that, you know, you guys are stuffing, you know, kids into areas and doing the right thing in space and amount, doing, doing more than probably you want to sometimes. But we all think you're doing a great job and keep forging ahead and you know, that's, that's all. It's the same tune. You guys are, you guys are awesome and thank you very much. Agenda items for next board meeting? Anything now? Again, please get them to me by end of business Wednesday prior to our Monday meeting. That gives us all, myself and Chris and Nicole, plenty of time to get it worn properly and that way I don't have to be doing this at work. So any agenda items, just let me know, forward them along. Now we're gonna head to executive session.